Thirty and I'll call this meeting to order. We just, if we can have roll call please.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Mayor Proton Schwartz.
Here.
Trustee Stelter.
Here.
Trustee Valentine. Trustee Chick.
Here.
Trustee Hunter. Trustee Heck.
Here.
You have a call.
Hey, thank you. Would someone make a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I'm making a motion to approve the agenda.
Seconded, right? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. So we'll go right into the actions and presentations, which is consideration of evidence of a sewer tap at Lot Two of Doris Avenue. And with that, I will turn it over to the town administrator for a little background. And before I let you start, I'm assuming that those of you in the audience would like to make a presentation.
I do.
Okay, so we'll give you each, we'll go five minutes, since this is sort of.
It's you.
Oh, so anyway, just so you know, we'll go ahead and do that, because we know you'll have things you want to say, so, okay.
Okay, how do you want this, how do you want us to start? Do you want us to read the staff report, what we've got, or?
Has everyone read the staff report?
Yes.
No, I think if everyone's read it, maybe just give a summary of the highlights of the situations.
Um, with the resolution that was passed for determining water standby fees, you know, the same held true for sewer taps. And um, this, 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 uh, this property owner or the sales, sale that's happening, between when that resolution was set and when they're planning to go to closing, there wasn't a lot of time. And that's why we as staff asked you to have this special meeting tonight to go over, because we can't make a decision based on the evidence that we have or don't have as it relates to sewer taps. Water taps, we found evidence, it was paid in two thousand and two. Um, and uh, for both properties, the Sheltons own another property on Doris Avenue. And this is another piece of property next door to them, um, that I believe you guys are in a contract to purchase, um, where we do have evidence of both water taps being purchased. So that is taken care of, issue at hand or sewer taps. Um, and what we had for evidence, uh, we were able to put in this packet, as well as one of the realtors' emails with their concerns as well. So that's all I got.
Kenny, would trustees like to ask some questions of Stephen? And then I'll have the presentations, but before then, anything you'd like to ask at this point?
I kind of go.
Yeah.
Yes, has there been any effort to contact either Steve or Robin Nicoloff on this matter?
You're right.
Phew. I think the issue, so I think the issue is one of you were out in state for a living?
Out of the country.
Out of the country?
Yeah, we both were.
So, um, I'm glad that they're here to be able to give any information they may have.
Trustee Schwartz, do you have any questions?
I kind of want to hear everything.
Yeah, okay.
From Trevor.
All right, so, um, whoever would like to come up first for your presentation, whichever realtor, I have a feeling either one of you, both of you would like to.
Dear Mayor, trustee, staff, and community members, thank you for calling this special meeting.
Make sure you give us your name.
Oh, I'm Patty Cage, I live in town. I'm the buyer's agent for the Sheltons. And I was also the buyer's agent when they bought Lot One last, two years ago. Um, I appreciate the time and the effort in helping us work for this resolution here. I want to especially thank Kaja for her diligent work in confirming that the water taps for both Lot One and Two were already paid. And that the refund will be issued to the Sheltons for their duplicate water tap payment in addition to the sewer tap. Also, the current issue involving Lot Two, which is under contract to be purchased by the Sheltons and closing this week, the sewer tap for this lot is not in question, and the burden of proof has been placed on the current or recent property owners to locate or receive, possibly from multiple owners ago. This is a nearly impossible task. In reviewing the Colorado municipal records retention schedule, SMM RRS, which is developed in collaboration with municipalities and the Colorado State Archives, I found that records pertaining to the sale, connection of water and sewer taps such as applications, permits, agreements are considered part of a municipality's infrastructure records and are to be retained permanently. These records are essential for legal, operational, and training purposes. Unfortunately, it appears that this permanent retention hasn't been consistently implemented in a way that allows to be seen retrieval or properties change hands. I'd like to propose that the town consider forming a small working group or committee, including classroom, interest the community members to assist with tracing past water and sewer tap purchases and improving the system going forward. It's clear that over the years, different staff members have managed this process without standardized method of record keeping. It's time we move beyond assigning blame for inconsistent records and instead focus on a practical solution. Given past irregularities in the town's financial practices, one possible option may be to adopt a more flexible, good faith approach, allowing for owner declarations of tap ownership to be accepted when adequate evidence exists, even if the receipt cannot be located. This will go a long way in restoring trust and supporting our residents in local property transactions. I want to thank you again for your time and consideration. Um, I also pulled off a few of the listings from the past. One starts in two thousand and seven, when it was one property and it was two and a half acres. And it made a note that there were no water and sewer taps at that time. The next listing in two thousand and sixteen said there are now two water taps and two sewer traps for these two lots. And in the past, these two, it was one big block of property and it got subdividing. And before it got subdivided, it was First Street. And even after the subdivision, some of the parcels were First Street and some are Doris Avenue. So in two thousand and sixteen, it said yes to sewer and water. Twenty twenty-two, yes to sewer and water. And two thousand and twenty-three, yes to sewer and water. And then these are also copies of the receipt from the Shelton who paid additional sewer and water tap on Lot One. That's all I got for you. And I did hope this can be helpful to you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Um, I have handouts. Eric. I could document this front and back.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Smith, members of town council and town staff. I'm Marsha Presley, and I'm the Realtor for the Silos. And I'm a Realtor involved with a lot of the properties that are listed on the list of standby taps. Over the years, record keeping practices may not have been as precise as they should have been, but that burden should not fall on the public. The responsibility to maintain accurate records belongs to the town. When properties change hands, established procedures exist to ensure that any unpaid obligations, such as tap fees, are addressed before a transfer is completed. Because a property can't transfer means to the new property owner without them being disclosed and accepted. They should be transferred free and clear of all means. If the town failed to collect a tap fee from the correct property owner at the appropriate time, that is an administrative oversight, not a financial obligation that should be placed on a new unsuspecting owner. So in my handouts, this is where Lot Two, first is the warranty date. And you can see it was transferred with one Town of Peonya water tap and one Town of Peonya sewer tap from Mr. Steven Nicoloff over there. Oh, Steven's there, I'm sorry. So anyway, and then the second sheet is from the title company. And the, one of the documents is from their transactions. Uh, software that they use, whenever they touch a file, they put in a note what they did. And it shows that someone from the title company called the Town of Peonya and um, let them know that it was transferring and that there would be a transfer fee. Um, and you can see that on the final bill from the Town of Peonya, what was charged, the transfer fee, the standby fees. And um, I thought this was kind of interesting, also a final meter check. When it's a standby tap, you're charging twenty-five dollars for checking that. But anyway, so that's, that's what I'm doing. So at that time, the title company found out what fees were owing to the Town of Peonya for this water and sewer tap. And that's what they received. There's no unpaid tap fee on that document. Many property owners have purchased the properties at a higher value because the understanding was that water and sewer taps were already secured. To now question that and ask for additional proof of payment, sometimes decades later, is not reasonable. At this point, I believe the best course of action is to acknowledge the properties still in question as having valid tax and move forward. That said, I'm encouraged by the efforts of everyone here and uh, to correct these past deficiencies and implement better procedures. I have confidence that going forward, this will no longer be an issue. And I appreciate the steps taken to ensure accurate record keeping for the future. Thank you for your time, thank you for being here tonight. And I urge you to resolve this matter in a way that is fair to the property owners who have relied on the town's past assurances.
Thank you. Thank you.
I, I practiced this time.
You didn't know you did five minutes, did you?
I did five minutes right there.
Well, you didn't. You didn't know you had five minutes.
No, I timed three.
You thought, since you two are the, you know. Had asked for this, you would get time. Um, anybody else in the audience that wants to come up and make a presentation to us, provide any insight?
I don't have a presentation.
No.
But I'm Julie Bennett, I represent RJM. My mom's sick and my sister has an event, I'd be honest, so. Um, but um, it's our understanding that we paid for our water and sewer tap when we purchased the property from Renee. So Renee purchased it in the beginning from Lot Two. And then two, three years ago, and then the last two years, RJM purchased it from her. And both of those times, as Marsha showed you, it indicated on the title that we had a free and clear sewer tap. And we have been paying standby fees of over three thousand dollars, I believe, since when she purchased it in the beginning of the year ago. We, in the last two years, I think two thousand. So I don't know, I don't have a lot to, to add, but I appreciate that calling this meeting and finding that we've done all of our due diligence that we can to water and sewer tap.
Thank you very much. Thanks. Anybody else? So with that, uh, I guess I have a question that, that I found kind of interesting, and can I have that stack of papers?
Oh, yeah.
So one of the things that, that was found was this letter from two thousand and seven, which was written to the Nicoloffs by our, the building inspector. Because I was quite confused as to why there were so many water and sewer taps associated with these lots. Normally you get one of each. So it sounds like at some point, the Nicoloffs perhaps wanted to subdivide those lots and put on a duplex. However, they were told in two thousand and seven that you, you can't do that unless you go to the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Town Board of Trustees, because that's all it's a zone, zoned one residence, not two. So the only thing we have here is the letter that was written in two thousand and seven, which I hope you all have a copy of it. And so, so there is some confusion as to the number of taps associated with the lot. And I was noticing that in two thousand and seven, it, uh, nope, it was the one after that. So in two thousand and seven, the owners were told, you can't subdivide unless you go to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And we have no record that anybody ever came and subdivided those lots. It's still listed on our town zone map as R One, one, one resident per lot.
Residential one.
Right, residential one, which means you can't put two on. It's, you'd have to be rezoned, it's not been rezoned to our knowledge. So then, uh, what was the one here? So one of these has, yeah, in two thousand and sixteen, it says that Peonya water taps paid. See, this one says two, two town taps, water sewer. And that was when it was being sold as two lots? And that's why there's two? Is it? So here's, that's my confusion. I don't know if, because there was some talk of three taps on, so.
Two taps on one of these.
Two water and four sewer.
See, that's, that's my, that's where I'm confused. Because if you have two lots, you wouldn't have four, you'd only have one of each on one lot and one of each on the other. So I don't know where the cross-communication happened. That somehow, the Realtor thought that they'd been subdivided and they could have two of each? So, so anyway.
It was my understanding from this, that originally they wanted a duplex on each of those two lots.
Right.
That's why there was the multiple. And they could divide the one into two lots. So there's now two that are big enough for one.
They can't, so the point is, you can't just do that. It has to come before the planning commission and the town. So that never happened. So they never.
They have Lot One and Lot Two here.
Right, but they can't subdivide.
That's right. Uh, they were intending to buy a duplex.
duplex.
You, you can't put a duplex.
You need to resubmit to Lot Two.
Right, so my point is, it was sold with multiple taps of each inappropriately because it was never rezoned to allow a duplex. So that's some confusion that I wanted to make sure everybody understood. But I think it's now a moot point, because there, each, each of these properties had, hang on one second and I'll have you come up. Um, it, it seems like each one of these properties is asking and has one water, one sewer. And now you're selling Lot Two with one water, one sewer. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and I think it would help if, I know you're the buyer. If you would come up maybe and give us some more information.
Let's see.
Yeah.
My name is Jim Shelton, Carol and I own Lot One. We're currently building, trying to finish the house on Lot One. And so we're in the contract, under contract to buy Lot Two. And I just thought I'd comment as a retired builder and developer, that you, uh, saying that you cannot sell it with two taps because it wasn't approved, actually, I have done that. That doesn't mean you can build duplexes. But you can have the two taps, but you could get stuck with two taps and not get approved for the duplex on each lot, is what it's, way I would correctly say that. But that is, that's not to say that the two taps wouldn't, wouldn't have been sold pending approval. Okay, because I've had that done, I've had that exact thing done, had partly approved and then the entire project wasn't approved. So I'd point that out. And then, and then maybe we could ask in the lots, like a ship, any light on what, how far are you at with your, what are you left there with your soul?
And before you do that, I want to ask another question, which is, so we charge a standby fee for every tap. Have there been two standby fees for a water tap applied to Lot Two?
It's like time we've been having once.
Okay, that, see that, from the Town of Peonya's perspective, there's only been a standby fee for one tap. So which I interpret as, that was the intent, is one tap on that lot. That, because I don't think the town would sell two taps when it's not zoned.
And all we're saying was it can't, it has been done.
I'm not sure it's been done here.
Okay.
That's, that I'm aware of, I mean, we don't know that for sure, but, but, but the fact that there was only one standby fee says to me the town intended one tap, so.
Circumstantial, I'd agree with you.
Yeah.
I'm just wanting to point that out.
Sure, no, that's good.
Maybe these guys perhaps could answer something that we don't know.
Yeah, no, that'd be good. And let me just add one more, when we were doing all the research on those tap, those water taps, the, the, the research really was based on the standby fees that had been charged to those particular properties, including Lot Two. And as I understand it, not a single one of those was getting charged for two water standby fees. Well, I'm not, I'm not going to worry, or at this point, we were really.
Lot Two, Doris?
No, any of them.
Yes.
On our list.
Yes, some of them had multiple.
No, for Doris, this was.
No, 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 I'm asking for all of them.
Unless in entirety, some of them have multiples, yes.
So there are some of the lots in the Town of Peonya that are paying for two water taps.
Yes.
Standby fees.
Yes.
Have you checked the zoning on those?
They are on Two, I think it's Clarkson.
Okay, okay.
Directed to check zoning.
Okay, no. Well, I'm trying to make my points, which is why I'm asking, is it would be, no, it was just answered by Steph.
Clarkson subdivision has two.
That have two that I have not checked zoning, so I would not definitely say.
Okay, let's check those for the, in the future. I think that would be really helpful.
What I might.
Because you make, you might make a liar out of me.
I'm just, not my intention to do anything of the kind. My intention was to point out that sometimes procedures go in a different order than you might think. And, and why I pointed that out was because, especially in a town where water taps are at a premium or are in a moratorium or are under scrutiny. I was told in this case, or in the case that I'm referring to, that without the tap, you weren't going to get approved. So the tap could be sold and you still might not get approved, that's all I'm trying to say. The, the tap, being sold to the property is not necessarily after the approval of the project, it can be before. And it also, could also be approved to sell and say, yes, we'll give you the tap because you can always go forward even with financing without saying, here's what I have to be able to build this duplex. So that's, I'm just pointing out procedurally that you might think it's got to go a certain way and
well.
This is the reverse order.
Well, I guess it's just the history of this one is a little odd.
And I still don't disagree with that.
Yeah, yeah.
But if you're going to try to build the case circumstantially, you should know the history that, that doesn't always go.
But at this point, you all have been just looking for one water and sewer on that lot.
We saw the proposal with a lot.
We, we.
We assume we were buying a lot and paying for a water and sewer tap.
One each.
Included in the lot sale, not, not to be paid for later, that's part, part of our.
Yeah, well, and my question is, you weren't expecting to get two of each on Lot Two?
No, 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 I never expected to get two.
That, that's, that's kind of, that's what I wanted.
The hottest dollar, that's great, but.
Yeah.
We're just struggling for one.
Well, it did add to the confusion, because as I was reading through the deeds and the paperwork, I kind of like, how can a lot have three sewer taps? So that's the confusion that I think we'll put to bed on this particular property. Yes, trustee Schwartz.
May I ask, are the gentlemen over here, if they'd be willing to just share what, what you all know? Because I think you all know, may know a lot. Not to put you on the spot, but you are here.
Well, I'm Robin Nicoloff. Uh, I've been a builder in this valley for over fifty years. And uh, I've created a lot of taxable buildings for the town. This, this whole thing is really time-consuming for me. Uh, I've gone through. Uh, I've gone through forty some years of documents. Trying to. Refresh my memory on these particular lots. And uh. I can't say that I've succeeded. Do you have any questions?
Um, I think my question to you, well, first of all, thank you for being here. Um, and for, for, you know, we're all dealing with lots of boxes and boxes of paperwork. Um, can you just give me the timeline? So did you sell it then to, what year did you sell it? Did you remind me that?
Um, I sold it to my brother in. If I recall, twenty sixteen. Twenty sixteen. And I bought it for, from a couple that. Was quite aged at the time, um, back in. Nineteen. It was nineteen eighty or eighty-one. And I'm sorry to say, I don't think there are a lot today. But at the time, I just assumed that I was getting. A, uh, a water tap, a sewer tap with each one. But. If you check your records, I paid for. Two water taps and I think two sewer taps. And then I. Thought about, uh. You know, the reasonableness of building at least one duplex on one of those lots. Uh, cause time and now it's even worse. Peony needs housing for many people now. So, um. At the time, I did not know if there was some kind of town ordinance against building, uh. A duplex on a. Was considered a single lot. And so much other work came up, but I didn't even pursue that. So, um, I don't. I guess it's. You, you've stated that, you know, you need. More than one tap to build a duplex. Which makes sense. Um, just wasn't clear at the time that was necessary. Any other questions?
So, so you paid for a sewer tap, you paid for two sewer taps on each lot? I mean, that's your recollection.
I can't swear to that, but it's possible.
Okay.
So, yeah, I was, so here's the contradiction that in the, in what we're seeing and hearing. So this was sold in two thousand and seven with, and it said need to purchase a water and sewer tap or taps. But yet our records show that the Nicolovs bought. A water tap for lot two and a water tap for lot one. Have you seen that? Did, did you see this receipt?
Yeah.
Before tonight?
Yeah.
So, so it's, I don't, I'm not, I'm really confused on the timeline. And I'm only looking at Kaja because she's the one that had to go through. I'm not looking for an answer. Just that this is what the records show. So in two thousand and seven, it says you need a water and sewer tap. Yet we potentially, unless that lot one and two isn't Doris Avenue.
I, I think the letter is saying you would be two water and two sewer tap on each one and a rezoning. I don't.
Well, no, what I'm saying here on this, on this.
Oh, I see.
Two thou, yeah, here, let me, I'll show you since.
Sorry, I thought we were talking about the two thousand and seven letter.
And when it was sold, when it was being sold in two thousand and seven. It says that you're, you're gonna have to buy a water and a sewer tap. And so, but yet the, the financial records in the town of Peonya. Are showing that you, I think, bought a water and a sewer tap, one, I mean, a water tap. One for lot one and one for lot two. But in two thousand and two, you didn't own it. Did you own it two thousand and two? Okay, so were you selling it in two thousand and seven and said you need to get water taps? Excuse me. Do you see what the confusion is? The, the real estate thing says you need to buy a water and a sewer tap. It's not?
I know, it's not.
Well, it's not from two thousand and seven?
No, it's not. We would.
Oh, okay.
Need to do a little more research to say that this is not.
Hang on one second. Okay, so, so if it's not the same, is that the only one that's the anomaly? Wait a minute.
Yeah, that's it.
That's the problem. So. All right. This to the Doris Avenue in two thousand and seven may not be the same.
It might be a separate property. There is this newer home built right down that same.
Yeah.
So forget that title. Yeah, so this is.
Actually, to clarify things, I sold it to Stephen in two thousand sixteen.
Yeah, that's the deed I had. That's where I was really confused when two thousand and seven came in.
I just, um.
So we can, if you can get on, be heard on Zoom.
Um, I just think it's important to recognize that these properties have been charged standby fees for years. For years.
Yeah.
And I think that that for the town. Yeah, yeah, you know, since they started. And I think standby fees started about two thousand ten, is that right?
I only have records, our, our system only goes back to. So I go back to two thousand and nineteen on both lots, so that's.
One of my clients who pays a standby fee for a property. Bought that property in two thousand one and her recollection that was approximately two thousand ten, two thousand twelve. That they started charging standby fees. Do you remember when you started getting a standby fee? That was one of the reasons you sold it, wasn't it?
I think I destroyed it after I bought it.
Well, so maybe, I don't know, but, but someone else said that. I just think the town needs to recognize that there's been past, past sins. And, and just put it behind you and move forward, move on to other work, move on to documenting and setting up new systems. And, and you know, be derived by the constituents. That have been paying for these fees because they think they own them. They bought the land because they thought they owned it. And for now, you to question it and ask them, oh, you've been paying standby fees for years. Well, now we want you to pay for the tap. Well, that doesn't make sense.
When property has been bought and sold in this county numerous times where people think they have water rights. And it turns out they have no water rights. And it's a common occurrence. People come in and, oh, there's a, there's the ditch going across the property.
All right, everybody, we're gonna stop back and forth. So if everybody would please just take your seats again. We'll, we'll get amongst ourselves because the only thing we have are the records we have.
And what I just gave.
And what you gave us, but again, there's some confusion, so we got that covered.
It's over the title, company's documentation. I think that's so important.
Hang on, please. So it's from the town's perspective, the reason that we did the resolution we did for the water taps is the town can't give away water taps. So that's why individual property owners need to come in and give us information. We can't just do a blanket, but it's thousands of dollars. So we have to create a system that is fair to the town water users. And, and fair to the property owners, which is why we did the resolution for the water taps. So every, you're, please, no, you can't call from the audience. So that, but I want you to know that was the thought process for the resolution. Because we can't give away, if, and the reason is we have people coming in and bringing us their receipts. That's a good way of us knowing that they paid for it. Again, those receipts weren't kept well in the past. But the reason we're here is because the town isn't ready to give a blanket. To everyone who says they have a water tap, sewer tap. So that's why we're here tonight to talk about this particular scenario, because there's gonna be different scenarios. And hang on, we're not gonna take any comments for a moment.
It's not a comment. I'm, I'm trying to remember if I have one particular thing.
I'm sorry, we gotta, or hang on, hang on, let us talk, talk with the staff. Um, because, yeah, it's a heated thing because we have a fiduciary responsibility to the town. And we need to do this in a way that is fair to the people that are on the water system. And the people who have had property. And we, I'm really sorry that in the past, the record keeping was terrible. I had no idea how bad it was, but we're trying to go forward with what we have and what we know. So we appreciate all the information that you provided to us. And I appreciate the staff's time doing what research they can. But I have one question, which is, do people pay a sewer standby as well as a water standby? Okay. And so. Go ahead.
There's sewer standby, yes. Um, and it. Is a little, I don't know, not quite.
So it's just, it's an affirmative?
Yes.
And so every one of the, um, bills associated with each of the properties?
No, it's not required to purchase both at the same time. Some folks did and have been paying a sewer standby and some folks didn't. In these, these lots in question have been paying sewer standby. I don't know how far back.
But at least to twenty nineteen.
Oh, it's twenty nineteen. It's not required to purchase it at the same time as a water standby. Um, some people on our list purchased just a water standby. Because there's no moratorium on sewer and figured they just purchased it when they went to connect. And then some purchased both at the same time. And various times in between, I guess.
So that's a bit of a conundrum too. Because the, was the statute clear in two thousand, I mean, the code clear in two thousand and two about the water taps? Cause you found that old ordinance.
About purchasing, um, some of the rules have changed over the years. So purchasing did, that's why this is considered paid in full, even though plus six thousand. In two thousand two, it's three thousand five hundred.
Right.
There was, um. But yeah, I'm not sure which part clear.
I was wondering if in two thousand and two, could people pay for half of it and then have to pay the other half within six, six months? Or did they have to pay it all?
I've read a few over the years from two thousand two up till.
Okay, okay.
Again, this, for these properties, the water taps are not in question, right?
Right.
That's what I was saying. So they, they, even though they did pay thirty five hundred dollars in two thousand and two, that was the price of water tap.
Right.
In town, well, you gotta make this a specific check. In town, question.
Right, how much is, how, how much was a sewer tap early on? Do you remember?
It's changed as well several times. So let me see if I refer to it, because we don't, it's a year that you're looking for.
Cause we know it's five thousand now and I don't know what it was in twenty fourteen. Okay, but no, the, the water tap, sorry, question, trustee Schwartz.
Okay, I just wanna kind of re, just summarize where we're at right now. So, um. We know that we need to look, we need to continue look at the bigger picture, the more holistic, longer term. That's not what we're here to discuss tonight. What we're here tonight is to discuss whether lot two on Doris Avenue has a previously purchased sewer tap only. Based on the best evidence that we have. And, um, you know, I, I get that we're, this, the decision we made tonight. May set a precedent, but this is what we, you know, we're gonna get into, we're gonna have this a lot. And I think we just have to make the best judgment that we can. And at a future time, look at the longer term solution. Um, and in my mind, if a, if some, if a. There's no way we're gonna be able to figure out if they paid for a sewer tap, if it was paid in half or full. But the fact that they've been paying a standby water, or sorry, I just said water. I meant sewer. Anytime I said water, you all know I meant sewer. But the fact that they've been paying a standby sewer tap. Going back to at least twenty nineteen and who knows how long before is enough evidence to me that says. We should, we should, we should, um. Decide that they, that lot two on Doris Avenue has a legally, has a legal right to a sewer tap.
Trustee Stelter?
The purpose for a sewer tap fee is to build and maintain our system. Um, our system right now, we, in two thousand and four, I believe, is when we started that. We paid four million dollars for the new system. We took it out of the Twin Lakes by the bridge across from the library. And we moved it downstream. And we paid four million dollars for that facility. We're still paying that, that fee. What my proposal is, is that we go back and we look at the standby fees that have been paid. And discount the sewer tap fee that much. That way, sewer taps, fees that have been paid are accounted for. And we also still account for a sewer tap. And we get the, the amount of money that we need to build and maintain our system. And that's about as fair as we can get.
Justy.
Uh, yeah, it was my understanding that the, the lot one. Water tap and sewer tap are already taken care of and we're only really talking about the sewer tap on lot two.
Actually, it's one two.
Yeah, well, that's not the one that's in question now. That's already been.
We don't know sewer free than one of those, but tonight we're looking at lot two. And however it's handled tonight, we'll, we'll most likely guide how staff would act with lot one.
Also like to find out that our records for standby fees only go back to a certain year. I cannot access past that. I have no way to track past that.
We do, we can go into our backups, but that.
Well, but the.
I'll pay, I'll pay our IT people.
Let me concur with trustee Stelter about the, if the standby fee has been paid, we should discount that, uh. The connection, uh, fee for the sewer tap. And, uh, resolve this problem then.
That makes no sense to me because if our records only go back to twenty nineteen, we either have to intentionally. Then it's just a random date based on our life of our.
Or, or paying for our IT people to go in and retrieve it. And I'm concerned at what point staff time and IT time will equal the price of the super tap. I'd like to voice that. I don't know if I'm allowed to voice that, but I'd like to voice that.
She's the deputy treasurer. She can't voice that.
And I think we're about probably at five or six hours of my time. And a couple of morgans already looking for this evidence. That is a consideration that I think we should consider in the monetary side of things.
Can you tell us what has been paid since the beginning of twenty nineteen on lot two for sewer?
Have changed, so I have to open up each transaction individually to get those range, or at least in chunks to see where that range is. Um, unfortunately, our P and D compare screen, um, doesn't track back. It's on the transaction page. So I have, I, it would be a bit of time to calculate that out. In twenty nineteen, I can say the first one that the rate was, let's see, um, that's water, sorry, sewer. Was at the rate of twenty five dollars and twenty five cents. The current rate is much higher than that. The current standby for sewer rate is. Rate of sixty dollars. So it's gone up a few times with them. Actually, it'll take a little bit of work to get the exact, but.
Sorry, did you say $60 a month?
$60 for in 2025, it matches the base rate. So as our base rates have gone up over the years, so have the standby rates.
So would you have the accounting? So he paid the standby fee prior to that. So he probably has his history.
So you have your record?
Look at that.
I do.
Could you could you hand that to the administrator if you're?
I don't know.
Okay. Do you want, you're not, so can you come on up to the podium since we're we're kind of going in a completely different path?
Would like to see you do the right thing. You know, some people have had these, I've got another property that's on your list. It's gone back 30 years. It's it's there were three generations of people living in three different houses there. They had three water taps and presumably three sewer taps. They're not in town. You know, I I mean, if you're asking me to pay $16,000 for a water tap. I'd much rather pay a lawyer. And I imagine that there's numerous people on that list that would do the same thing. Because I can pay a lot, I think I can win this case with a lot less money than the $32,000 or whatever it's going to be that I would have to pay just for those water taps. That doesn't include sewer. I mean, it's, you know. It's like buying a car. And two years later, the dealership comes and says, that's our car, you know? Show me your receipt for buying a car. Some people don't keep receipts. And the way things have worked in this valley, in this county for the past 50 years that I'm familiar with was oftentimes by word of mouth. And, you know, you know, John Norris could tell you where every piece of infrastructure was in this town. We can't blame the council back then for kicking him out without his knowledge being transferred to the town. At any rate, yes, I would give you this piece of paper. And I mean, I tell you, I'm hesitant somewhat in jest, just because the fee was much less.
Anything else? Thank you.
You're up.
Justie Schwartz.
It it doesn't honestly matter to me. Well, thank you for sharing that, first of all. But it doesn't really matter to me. Because what are we gonna do, ask every constituent who has these issues to? Can you bring your standby paperwork that you may or may not have to to counsel? Like, I'm like, what are we doing to ourselves? What are we doing to to our community? Like, yes, trustee Stelter, like, we know that we have a lot of maintenance to pay for. But this, they've been paying the standby water tap fee. And sewer, we've been paying. Sewer, we've been paying the standby sewer tap fee, they are contributing to the maintenance of this system. And I mean, unless we're gonna go down a massive rabbit hole of staff time and frustration, I'm like. I don't know, it's like if they've been paying standby sewer fees. I think we just have to honor it and know that we're gonna do a much, much better job going forward.
Exceptions that we have to look at of the standby fees, because the staff has already cleared up a large number of of those standby water tap fees.
Wait. Water?
Well.
Do you, no, no, you mean, well, because I feel like our water resolution is is, well, I think it's what's clear about it is that we are looking to individual landowners, property owners to come in and tell us if they have paid or not because of the way the moratorium is written. So I think what I want to do here is make a distinction. The moratorium is the reason we did the resolution for water. Because of the timeline, and that still has to stand for water taps. Do you agree? Administrator, win. Yeah, okay. And because of the when the moratorium went into place, January 27, 2012. So, but with the sewer, we don't have a moratorium. We really are at a place, what is a fair way? If people don't, we don't know if they have a tap, what's the fair way to deal with sewer? This is not going to change how we're gonna deal with water. And I would say that when this gentleman comes in for your other two taps, we will have this discussion. Because we just need to know the history of that property because of the moratorium. Would would you agree with that, or would you modify?
Our code provides for a path for if there's if there's any sort of question on who's paid what, and it's having this case brought before the board for a decision. So it stands to reason that we've presented you with what we have. They've presented you with what they have for both water and sewer. And we as staff can't just decide that somebody's paying based on a standby fee that may or may not have paid for an entire tap fee, right? That's why it's to you to decide.
So at this point, I don't know, I mean, okay, hang on one second, I'm gonna suspend everything coming up. I know you it's you're buying the property too.
Carolyn Shelton, I just had a real quick administrative question. Is it standard procedure to pay standby fees if a sewer tap has not been purchased?
Good question.
I can't speak for what happened before July 23, but I can tell you that's not standard. Since then.
But they are.
I don't know.
And honestly, that's our problem, is that we found that people hadn't paid for their water taps, even in the last three, you know, previous three, four years ago.
But we're paying.
Right, right, but I'm just telling you, the records are not good. We could not guarantee that people had followed the code for their water tap, which is what put us into our spot with the resolution, not, but but it does cast the same question for the sewer taps. If we don't have any record, luckily, you have a record of water taps since 2002. And if the code did not necessarily require the payment of that tap, they just imposed the standby fee. I don't know what the code said back in, and I'm looking at our current code now. What do we have to do now for a water, for a sewer tap? Let's see, I'm just gonna read it. Every property owner who wishes to connect a sewer line from their property, their property to any main sewer line constructor owned by the town should pay a sewer tap fee prior to being permitted to connect. The basic sewer tap fee for each residential commercial unit will be $5,000. That is, and you're interpreting you have to pay it. How are you?
That's what it says, right?
Well, it doesn't, but it says prior to being permitted to connect to the main sewer line. So that, to me, it doesn't have a date certain like water taps do. So anyway, I'm just gumming up the works, but it it feels.
I think I can clarify this. The reason we have outstanding water taps is because of the water moratorium.
Right.
We have no requirement to purchase sewer tap prior to the point where you want to connect. So we probably are beating a horse here that is no longer living. So there's very few water taps, I wonder there's.
The S word.
There are very few sewer taps that are not documented. And very few, very little reason to purchase one in advance. So, Kaja, you have an interjection?
I I don't know the reasoning behind, I don't know the thought process or what might or might not have been said at the time, but it it does seem that prior to various moratoriums in the town's history, a lot of folks purchased the water and the sewer. And that's where the sewer's tap or standby came in, because you don't have water, you don't have anything going sewer. But it does seem that people might have been under the impression that they had to purchase both before the moratorium. Now, that's not true, that's not accurate, but it does seem, based on the evidence, that that might have been the impression impression conveyed to people who came in and paid their $11,000 upfront for both in quite a few cases. So I I agree that there's no need for it, but it does seem to have occurred rather frequently prior to moratoriums in the town's history.
There was a sewer moratorium in the early 90s before we moved the Twin Lakes out.
I didn't find that one yet.
That moratorium was on because I needed to hook up to the sewer and I couldn't. And I wasn't allowed to change my subject, which was under my neighbor's trailer. It was a mess. So I got on the council and the first vote I made was to approve the construction of the town sewer, new town sewer plant. So that's when the sewer moratorium was lifted, when the when the plant was constructed and finished.
One second, but it still leaves us at. How do you cut the baby with the sewer taps?
I mean, I would, I would move to make a motion, at least as a starting point for this particular lot.
Go ahead.
I'll see what what goes. I move that we move forward with the sewer the sewer tap for lot two on Doris Avenue without additional payments from the buyers.
Do we have a second?
Can I clarify? Yeah. Actually, the tap in fee, they'll still need to pay somebody to actually do the connection.
That is true, that's a separate charge. Correct, yeah. Thank you, thank you for that clarification. Do you want me to restate it?
Yeah, and this would actually be applicable to both lots, lot one and.
Okay. Sure, okay.
Rather than Paul, try.
Okay, I move that town move forward with the sewer taps for lot one and two on Doris Avenue without additional payment from the buyers, with the exception of the connection fees.
A suggestion, then if if that's if that's gonna be your motion, that you would say that for lots one and two Doris Avenue, that the evidence that has been provided is in support of paying for a sewer tap fee for both lots one and two in full. And I think that would be enough to satisfy this one.
Yeah.
Because because you're setting a precedent here with evidence that has been presented to you. I know it's not a quasi judicial hearing, this isn't a public hearing, but you have been presented with evidence from either yes or no, so.
Shall I restate?
Did you restate it? Did you, okay.
Okay, based on the evidence presented tonight, I move that town move forward with providing sewer taps for lot one and two on Doris Avenue with no additional fees except for connection fees. But help me here, trying my best.
Is the issue the fees, the additional fees?
My issue is that you said based on evidence was before your motion, before you started your motion. The wording matters. Would you like me to write something on the screen that might be helpful?
Perhaps, yeah, I might write something on my computer.
No.
Also, since we're right next to lot two and 104 doors, to be specific. Since we're, this is for heaven and understanding of it.
Did you say? Thanks, sir.
Okay, I'd like to, thank you. I move to accept the evidence presented tonight as satisfying as satisfying the payment of sewer tap fees for both lot two on Doris Avenue and 104 Doris Avenue. Do you need me to say anything about the connection fees? Thank you.
What is the cost?
It's by who you choose. Different contractors charge different things to care.
No, I mean for the tap fee.
It's nothing, it's already.
It's a no.
It's already been paid.
What if I come in tomorrow and need to make another tap fee?
It'll still be $5,000 in town and it's a different rate out of town.
No.
$5,000.
We need a second, or do I have a second? Everybody's thinking.
I guess I just like a re-read, make sure I understand what the motion was.
The motion is, I move to accept the evidence presented tonight as satisfying the payment of sewer tap fees for both lot two Doris Avenue and 104 Doris Avenue.
Need further discussion before a second, we have to have a second.
Yeah, we have a second, we have discussion. Waiting for a second.
Justie Heck has seconded. Yes, trustee Stelter.
I'm uncomfortable with setting a precedent such as this. If the sewer tap was paid for at the same time as the water tap, we have a a concrete evidence that the water cap on one and two were paid. That we have, we have a receipt. We do not have a receipt for a sewer tap. It's not required that you pay for a sewer tap at the same time. I think that we're opening a can of worms where if anybody has been charged a sewer tap fee at any time, they can claim sewer tap free and clear. Or with the amount of sewer tap fees that paid.
You're talking standby.
Standbys. And in my opinion, that's not fair to those that have actually paid for their sewer taps and paid their standby fees. And the people that have financed the sewer for the last 20 something years.
With their existing tap.
With paying the tap fee and sewer and and sewer.
I see.
Or standby fees, either one.
Yeah, so the the distinction is, we haven't differentiated those people that did pay the whatever amount. I'm gonna just say it was $3,500 in 2002, for lack of anything else. And then have been paying a standby fee all those years as well. It's it's that distinction you're that other people might, well, I'm a little concerned that other people that have been paying a standby fee and paid their we do have evidence they paid or don't want their money back on the tap fee. And let let me ask a question in terms of, again, record keeping, because when I was working with Kaja and Stefan, I was focused only on water taps. Do we have the same very sketchy evidence of people paying the sewer tap on those same properties?
Yeah, it doesn't seem to be consistently recorded throughout the years. For these lots in particular, I actually don't have a receipt, somebody printed off the entire. the entire, every transaction made that year on pieces of paper, and it was under a line item for water taps, that's where I got this from. Um, and others, we have receipts, there's payments in casella, it's pretty scattered where we're finding evidence of any sewers now that we've begun looking.
Can I make a clarification as well? So the sewer standby rate is more than the base rate.
I forgot.
So it is more than the base rate, it's more by three dollars. So it goes from town of, let's see, wastewater sewer standby fee, the wastewater standby fee is $60 per month for each unit. The only other that has a standby that's outside of town is Good Valley because of that lot agreement, so everything that has wastewater is in town. The current wastewater, uh, base rate is $57 a month, and so if somebody has a, you know, has, and this has gone since, uh, this was effective, uh, two thousand and four, so those base rates are more than what is, or I'm sorry, those standby fees for sewer are more than what the base rate is. I think that's an important thing to note as well.
Since two thousand and four?
Uh, this ordinance was put in place two, uh, twenty twenty three oh seven, it went into effect January one of twenty four.
And you're referring to the sewer rates?
The sewer standby fee and the, the sewer rate in town.
And that was sixty?
The sewer rate in town is $57 a month for residential, and then the standby fee is $60.
And we don't know how far back that was done, do we?
Uh, twenty twenty three oh seven, so.
But I mean, for the last two years, so.
Yeah, we don't know, I haven't, prior to that, I'm sorry, I'm trying to say, I don't know, but one before that was higher.
So standby fees in two thousand twenty two for two thousand twenty three, um, were $55, and they were the same as the rate, um, for residential's in town, it's $55. And that jumped from, that, that jumped from five dollars.
In that year, that particular, two thousand twenty three. So we can only kind of guess what is potentially comparable, and we certainly can't go back to two thousand and two, hang on one second.
But it doesn't matter, I mean, what's on the table right now is we have a motion and you have a second.
Well, I think what my, my issue is, I have no idea what this means financially. Do, do we know if they were doing, let's just say they've been paying sixty bucks for the last two years?
I haven't done any sort of modeling.
Maybe $400 a year, I'm sued $2400. Um, and we don't know what it was from twenty nineteen to current, so I'm kind of, that to me is, is significant to find out how much money's been paid in the standbys for the last five years, because in this case, we know that they've been paying since twenty nineteen.
It's a lot of financial modeling, using casella, it would be, it would be a lot of
For two years, it's $2,400. Twelve hundred dollars.
For everyone that has a standby?
No, no, these, this one. I'm, I'm just referring to these two, because we know they've been paying for quite some time, but we don't, you know, we, we can only go back, we only know they've been paying since twenty nineteen, uh, based on our records. So I'm just saying, for the last two years, it'd be $60 a month. Um, no, it'd be so at least.
And February twenty four, it was sixty, and January twenty twenty four, it was fifty five. This is where there's been a lot of changes over the years.
That's what happened because of the former finance person.
My math is bad, it's seven twenty eight years, sixty bucks, sorry. Anyway, trustee Stelter.
Um, we have evidence that the sewer standby fees were paid in August of twenty twenty two, and then going back on the other documentation we have here, where it was sold in, let's see, there's one more piece of paper here that I'm looking for, that is dated October twelfth, twenty twenty three, we have a sewer standby fee was paid, that particular date.
It's a page, isn't it?
Uh, it's page twenty four, is the last one I just spoke about, and the other one is on, well, that's gonna be October third, two thousand and two, we have evidence of sewer tap fees, standby fees being paid. Oh, that's, that's not true, I'm sorry, the date is August eighth, twenty twenty two, on page eight.
We have more to evidence based on what we can find in casella, even if it's not in our package, going back to twenty nineteen. But what about what Steve gave?
I don't, I don't know what it says.
It was a, a $25 standby fee in two thousand eighteen.
Oh, man.
We just revisit where we're at in the process right now?
Yeah.
So we have, we have to get a motion, a second.
Can we call a question?
Yes.
Always an order.
Yep. Okay. You all have it?
Do you have a roll call vote, please, Madam Mayor?
Sure.
Do you remember what the motion was?
I move to accept the evidence presented tonight as satisfying the payment of sewer tap fees for both lot two Doris Avenue and one oh four Doris Avenue.
Right. All in favor?
You have a roll call.
Roll call. Oh, sorry, yeah.
Trustee, head?
I'm.
Trustee, check?
I.
You're for town sports?
I.
Trustee, Stelter?
Nay.
Trustee, Valentine?
Nay.
Motion, kids?
There is another motion I would like you to, uh, if you're gonna have us look up zoning for each one of these standbys, I'd like that to come as a, as a formal motion a second. But will we still follow our procedures?
No, wait, 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 no, because now I didn't, and I just want to give you why I think that's important to know, is because on the list we provided in two thousand and twenty two, I don't believe that the properties were noted to have multiple taps. I think, it was, I don't have it in front of me, but it seems like it was one per property. So that's why I was surprised. Um, so I, I think it'd be really helpful to know if there are properties in that list that have two, more than one associated with them, and if they do, why?
Could I ask a question about this in math?
No. Afterwards.
Okay.
You can fill out an S.
Okay.
Um, yeah, Sam?
Just, the agenda is specifically with this property, so I don't know if it's appropriate for that conversation or decision.
Thanks, we could do that.
If you want.
Yeah. Hey, yeah, come on up afterwards.
Okay.
All right, with that, I will adjourn the meeting.